I would like to call this meeting to order. This is Kathleen Willnauer. It is six thirty-four, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board Meeting, and Megan will be calling role this evening.
Carol Crisca.
President.
Mark Crumbaker.
Here.
Michael Fauks.
Here.
Kathleen Willnauer.
Here.
Jim Neese. Melissa Morris is absent. Brian Lewenberg. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Megan. This is Kathleen Willnauer again. I will now be reading the statement for hybrid in-person or virtual meeting. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all of your electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call nine one three seven one five one seven zero zero. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a ten seconds remaining warning sound. Two board members and presenters. Please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presentive live and recording the meeting. Thank you. Now we will move on to the agenda items. Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions to the agenda for this evening? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The agenda has been approved. Are there any disclosures of conflict of interest this evening? Hearing none, is there any disclosure of external contacts or discussions? Hearing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes dated September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions to the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I am moved to approve the minutes, Mark Crumbaker.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim Neese, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And the minutes from September nineteenth have been approved. We will now move on to board reports. Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Good evening, Sean Pennley, County Planning Staff. The, for the Board of County Commissioners' actions, we wanted to note one of the cases that was considered by this board at the August meeting. Jack's Hollow Drive-Thru Haunted Event located at three zero four five zero West one hundred and forty-third Street. You may recall, this board recommended approval, and the Board of County Commissioners did approve that conditional use permit on September fifteenth. So we, one of the things that we wanted to do, I think the board had asked us to, obviously it was approved with a one-year conditional use permit, but in addition, the Board of County Commissioners requested staff to go out and monitor the event. So Michelle Lineiger and I actually went out there on the first night that they were open on October first, and it actually went very well. There were really no traffic backups at all on one hundred and forty-third Street, so that those stipulations with the signup genius and following all of the reservations worked very well. They got much fewer traffic than I think that they were expecting even despite that with the signup genius, but it did work well and some of the, we were there for at least a couple hours and some of the people, we actually saw some of the guests, and they thought it went very well and they were complimentary of the fact that it was easier to actually navigate onsite. But nevertheless, there were no backups, no complaints. Staff has received no complaints from the neighbors. And so for the first two weeks, I guess last weekend went just as well. So we heard no issues. So we just wanted to provide an update for that case that was recommended for approval by this board.
Sean, I've got a quick question. What about the one neighbor that was, you know, their property was almost contiguous?
Staff has not heard anything from that adjacent neighbor. So that, so that went well for the first, at least the first two weeks of that operation. So we want to provide an update for that case. So that's, that concludes Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Thank you, Sean. This is Kathleen Willnauer. Are there any planning commission actions?
Yes, thank you, Sean Pennley, Planning Staff. I wanted to note that the, there was no planning commission meeting in September. In lieu of that, there was a planning workshop. Some of you attended that meeting. It was a joint meeting that was for the planning commissioners as well as all of the zoning boards and Board of Zoning Appeals. And at that meeting, it was a training workshop that we try to have an annual event for all the boards. And some of you may recall Peg Trent, the chief counsel for the county, presented a training session for board members. That was an opportunity to provide an update regarding meeting procedures and updates. We're working through some updates for all the individual boards. One of the things that you will be seeing is updated bylaws. I think this board may have had bylaws at one time, but it's been some time. We are updating the bylaws. So they'll have more procedural things at that time when that is presented. We anticipate that will be sometime here this fall. So if not the next meeting, maybe in December. We do plan to have an updated bylaws adopted by this board, and there will be additional workshops. We hope to have an additional training at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three for additional details for, specific to the zoning boards. I think there's more details for the zoning boards versus planning commission. But at any rate, that, that information for anyone who is not there, that is on our planning commission website, the PowerPoint that Peg Trent presented as well as the audio recording. So we hope to have, as I mentioned, a couple, you know, have at least one training session per year. And so the next one, we hope to have in the spring of next year.
Sean, Jim Neese. The, is she going to be president at the planning commission meeting?
Our chief, Peg Trent. I am not aware that she'll be at the next planning commission meeting. And actually, that was the other thing I wanted to mention as far as planning commission. The October meeting is canceled. This month's planning commission meeting will be canceled, but we will have a meeting in November. I am not aware of Legal being at that meeting, but we can check. And as I mentioned, probably what would be even better opportunity to have further discussion with Legal and planning staff together would be when we present the draft bylaws for the individual zoning boards. That'll probably be the best chance to have that additional discussion on procedural details. So we'll provide an update to the zoning board when we have those dates set. I believe the date scheduled is November twenty-second, which is the week of Thanksgiving. So we need to check with the planning commission to see if there are conflicts with that date, but that's the Tuesday of Thanksgiving. That's when it's scheduled. If it is a problem for the majority for the quorum, right now, there's only one item that we have planned to bring to the planning commission in November, and it does not require a public hearing. So I know the chairman had indicated before, if we have a situation again where we don't have a quorum, he would still like to have that meeting if there's no public hearing items on the agenda. But we'll, we'll discuss that and we'll confirm later this week if we're going to have that November planning commission meeting. That concludes, oh, excuse me, one last thing, I'm sorry. I do want to mention, we have updates coming for the rural comprehensive plan. There are a few projects, you may recall, we talked about updates to the Sunflower Area Plan. That's ongoing. We have our first subcommittee meeting scheduled for October twenty-eighth, for those that are on that committee. Also, we have started the updates to the airport compatibility plans for both Executive Airport and New Century Air Center. We had the first advisory committee meeting on October third and the first two public workshops on October fourth and October sixth for Executive Airport and New Century Air Center. Those went very well. We had pretty good attendance at both of those public workshops. And just getting started, our, the consultant that staff's working with, Kaufman Associates, has just started doing their analysis for the updates, and we hope to have updates for those two plans at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three. So we'll, we'll be scheduling updates with the planning commission as they're ready. But we just wanted to provide an update for those reports as well.
Jim Neese, I've got one quick question, Sean. The last zoning board meeting, we had, we had the mother-in-law situation that we approved. And at that time, there was some discussion because some of these were becoming more prevalent. You were possibly going to review some, look at some more guidelines for those because right now they're pretty general. And, you know, I don't expect you to have done anything, but would you keep that as something that these staff should consider? Kind of defining those, that issue a little bit?
Sure, Sean Pennley, Planning Staff. I was actually not at the last zoning board meeting. Karen Miller and I believe Michelle Cricks were attending the last zoning board meeting in September. I don't recall the specifics. Was that an ADU permit or was that an accessory building? Was it an accessory use with a conditional use permit? Does anyone remember?
I think, I think it was like a mother-in-law. But, and I, I don't expect an answer now. I just don't want that, if it's something that should be looked into.
Yeah.
Apparently it wasn't passed long, so do me a favor and read the minutes and...
I do, I do know what that is now. Michelle pointed that out, it was a conditional use permit. I think what the update is that we're looking at for that, we have talked about an update to our zoning regulations regarding accessory uses, excuse me, accessory, accessory structures, total number and size, oversized accessory buildings. What, what we're really trying to get after is the size of accessory structures, oversized accessory structure. Actually, Michelle Lineiger is working on starting some research into that issue. We are wanting to bring an update to the planning commission, so that'll probably be coming up, we hope, also this fall. But yes, that is something that staff is looking at, is specifically dealing with accessory structures. Yeah. I should have just had Michelle give an update on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. We'll now move to the business before the board. This evening, we'll be hearing application number NWA twenty-two dash two-five-two ADUP. This is an accessory dwelling unit permit at eighty-four hundred Edgerton Road. Abby R. Bakers, the applicant and the Baker Family Trust landowner, is requesting an accessory dwelling unit permit on twenty-three point one acres on proposed zone RUR Rural District in Section twenty-five Township twelve, Range twenty-one. And before we begin, I would like to read to you the zoning board public hearing procedures. And the following procedures will be adhered to by the zoning board when considering applications for rezoning, development plans, Platts, conditional use permits, or accessory dwelling unit permits. Please note, the chair of the zoning board retains the right to modify or deviate from these procedures if warranted. So the first thing we will do is introduce the applicant. The planning office will give their presentation of ten minutes or less. The staff will provide a brief overview and highlights of the written staff report. A copy of the written report is available upon request. Then we will have questions of staff from the zoning board. At that time, the applicant will give his presentation of ten minutes or less. The applicant shall provide a brief overview of the proposal and comments in response to the staff report. There will then be questions of the applicant from the zoning board. At that time, we will open the public comments section. And remember that the comments should be kept to three minutes or less per individual. We'd ask that you please provide your name and address for the record. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. We will then have further questions by the zoning board of the staff, the applicant, or the public. Then we will close the public comments section of our hearing. We will have discussion of the application by the zoning board. And then we will make a recommendation by the zoning board to the Board of County Commissioners. That recommendation will be made, and then Sean Pennley will announce the Board of County Commissioners' meeting date and location. So we will make a motion to either approve or deny the recommendation that the planning department has made. That goes to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners will make the final decision. If there are any protest petitions, they must be filed in the Office of Records and Tax Administration, which functions as the county clerk within fourteen days from the conclusion of the public hearing held by the zoning board. RTA, which is the Records of Tax Administration, requires an original and two copies of the petition at the time of filing. Sample copies of protest petitions may be obtained from the Johnson County Legal Department. They're located at one eleven South Cherry, Suite thirty-two hundred in Olathe, Kansas. And at this time, we will hear the planning department report.
Good evening, Michelle Lineiger, Planning Staff. This item before you tonight is an application for an accessory dwelling unit permit for a second dwelling unit on the property. This shows the location of the approximately twenty-three acre property. It's located west of Edgerton Road and north of one hundred and eighty-seventh Street. This is an aerial showing the property. It was purchased by the Bakers in two thousand and eighteen, and at that time, the property included the original house and accessory buildings, as you can see on the aerial. The following year, the applicant constructed the now primary residence and altered the original house to no longer meet the definition of a dwelling unit, making it an accessory building. The applicant is now requesting accessory dwelling unit permit to again use the original house as a dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit is permitted in all rural residential and planned residential zoning districts where single-family dwellings are permitted. And we have two types of accessory dwelling units. We have an administrative accessory dwelling unit certificate, and this is a process that is reviewed by staff as long as you can meet all the standards outlined in the code. The second option, which is the application that you're reviewing today, is an accessory dwelling unit permit where the performance standards cannot all be met. And so this is a public hearing process. It's very similar to the conditional use permit process. And that is reviewed by the zoning board and then action taken with the Board of County Commissioners. These are the standards that the application is not able to meet, and that's why this public review happens. Most of, all of these are because the structure was there prior to the construction of the new primary residence. One of the standards is the maximum size of nine hundred square feet. The original house is approximately eleven hundred square feet. The ADU shall be no greater than two hundred feet from the primary structure. You notice on this aerial, the original house is approximately three hundred and sixty feet in front of the primary residence. There isn't significant hill in that location, and it is significantly wooded, so you can't see that, the primary residence from the road. And then the ADAU shall not be located in the front yard. Original house is down towards the road, and then the, the new structure is up in the, up in the trees. Here's some additional pictures from what was in your staff report. These are all taken from Edgerton Road, what you would see while driving by. This one is looking southwest. You can see the dwelling unit, and then off to the right-hand side of the picture, all the trees, and that's where the primary residence is back in there. Then looking from the other direction, again, all you see is accessory buildings and the residence. With this being existing house, the view and the character of the neighborhood will not change. What you see driving along the road today is what you will see tomorrow. And actually, it will be less of a potential nuisance. Vacant houses and vacant structures can be quite a nuisance to those who shouldn't be there. So houses like to be lived in, and that way there's more eyes on the road and on the property, and then the applicant can utilize the existing dwelling unit on the site. Whoops, wrong way. Staff does recommend approval of accessory dwelling unit permit for eleven hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit located at eighty-four hundred Edgerton Road, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report. And just one thing to note of the stipulations, the owner of the property is required to live on the property in one of those two houses. Doesn't have to live in the primary structure, but must reside on the property in order to maintain that security of, and not becoming a complete rental property. And it usually helps with the maintenance of the property also. And that is something that will be recorded with a register of deeds. Oh, there's a motion if you would like to use that also, and if you have any questions.
This is Kathleen Willnauer. Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions of staff from the zoning board? Hearing none, we will listen to the applicant presentation.
Hello, I am Abby Baker, and I am the applicant for this accessory dwelling unit. I am, I'm looking, and really, in regards to a proposal or a speech, I really didn't have one.
Abby, would you please state your name and address for our record, please?
Abby Baker, eighty-four hundred Edgerton Road, Minnesota. What I, what I have been talking to the county about, or the planning, Michelle, about is there have been a lot of squatters. I'm on a train track. So what you don't see here, and maybe you do see in one of these, these pictures, is there's a train track that is not far from there. My husband and I, as you, my husband and I bought this, and we bought our primary res, or built our primary residence, and we had no plans to actually renovate that. We were going to use it for storage or whatnot, and my husband passed away. And honestly, using it as a second dwelling would be great. So I went ahead and actually fixed it up on the outside and inside. And when we went to go do that, we saw that there were already squatters that had come in and moved things around. There was stuff everywhere, so we ended up getting that cleaned up, put some security systems and lights and floodlights out there, and some cameras. So what I'm, what I'm asking you guys to do is allow this original farm home to be utilized by people so that I don't keep having squatters. As you can see, or if she was explaining, you can't actually see my home from that road. You have to go up, I think it's a quarter of a mile around, and people don't even know that I exist there. So having somebody in that location would actually be a benefit for security and a benefit to Edgerton Road in general, just so that we do keep the riffraff off of that and make sure that nobody comes by with the, from the trains and whatnot. Really, that's all I have to say. I mean, I, if you guys have questions or if that's how that goes, I'm, I'm all ears. So thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Are there any questions of the applicant from the zoning board? Hearing none, Abby, thank you. We will now open the public comments section of our meeting, and we will be taking comments from people that are in person. If you'd please come up to the microphone at the podium and state your name and address. And if you would please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And not seeing anyone wanting to make a public comment, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
No, I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Are there any further questions by the zoning board of the staff, the applicant, or the public?
This is Brian Lewenberg. I noticed in the, in the packet we got, there was, there was one comment from a neighbor. And that's what we always ask about, is what do the neighbors think? And they were strongly opposed, but they didn't really say a whole lot other than it's a bad precedent. I guess, given that it's a security concern, I know that makes this a little bit different, but I didn't. Was there any comment, further information about that comment from the neighbor?
This is Michelle Lineiger. I did speak to that person later on. The, the comment that was included was submitted after the sign was posted, and then he did call after he got a public notice. He was mainly asking questions about ADUs. Can you have more than one? Can everybody have one? Can you have apartment buildings? What are the details about it? I think it, there was a little bit of a learning curve there, understanding. He didn't say anything as to changing what he submitted in writing, though.
Brian Lewenberg, another, I guess another question is, when you have an ADU, the, is the, is the use of the property specifically as a rental property? Does that enter into it at all? Or is it, are these intended more for like the guest house, mother-in-law house? Or is, does the fact that it's specifically intended to be a rental property, does that make a difference?
Michelle Lineiger again. The property itself, like I had noted at the end of my presentation, the applicant has to live there. So they have to live in one of those. The property owner is able to either use it for a mother-in-law or family member, older child, or they can rent it out.
So the only real difference is the size and the distance? That's really the only thing we're talking about?
Correct. It's supposed to be subordinate. We do have a few of these out in the county where somebody will buy a large piece of property for the location or the size or such and not be interested in necessarily living in that old homestead, but looking to build a different house. A lot of those old farmsteads were closer to the road. So you'll see it kind of opposite of what we would like if you were building brand-new. And so it's, it's a little different when you have a house that's already there, kind of retrofitting it in the place.
Thank you.
Carol Crisca, I just have a couple of questions. When you say it's at the front, is it considered at the front because it's closest to the road? Is that how you guys determine? Okay, because I was, I didn't know which way her house faced. And the other thing is, just, you know, you can have one dwelling on ten acres. Is this property ever in the future, from the layout, is it a possibility to subdivide this property? As just a curiosity, not...
You can always request it. That was something Abby and I looked at initially, what her options are for that property. And it would take a lot of waivers from the codes in order to split it just because of the relationship of where the, where the two houses are and whether they would be able to get the required frontage. And it, it would be very, very, very difficult.
Okay, I was just thinking about in the future or whatever.
Okay, I was just thinking about in the future or whatever, not necessarily now. Thank you.
Hi, this is Mark Crumbaker. I have a couple of questions. It appears to me, it was on, yeah. I, it appears to me that we're asking for several, in essence, variations from the typical ADU. Okay, both in terms of distance, size, and so forth, and so forth, correct?
That's correct. There's three of them.
Right. Um, in your assessment, why did you decide that it was appropriate to change that? Not stand by that?
Sure. Michelle Lineiger, Planning Staff. Um, this, in, in our regulations, it does allow for two types of ADU, a permit and a certificate. Um, basically for situations like this. Um, some things that really came into play is that the character of the neighborhood's not going to change. Um, that house is there, you see it today. Um, the one good thing is, is that you'll have somebody occupying it. So there's eyes in the area. Um, I think those two things came into a big, um, part of the recommendation. Also, if this doesn't go through, that house is still there.
Right.
Um, whether it is utilized or if it sits vacant, it's still there. Um, likely it will be better visually if, uh, somebody's living there. So it's really not a change to the character of the neighborhood and what you'll see. You probably won't even notice, like Abby said, her house is tucked up in the, in the, um, trees and you, you would never know it's there.
And many times, of course, this can be done without coming to this board, correct? We're, we're.
If, if they meet all the standards, um, you can obtain an accessory dwelling unit, uh, certificate.
For the nine hundred under the.
Yes, yes, there's, there's various things. The, the size, the location, uh, the distance from the, um, primary structure. You can, um, build new, you could retrofit a garage. I mean, there's all kinds of ins and outs for that. But really this is kind of, this permit process is really for, you know, situations like this where it's there.
Yeah, it's already there. Doesn't make sense to chop off, you know, somebody's square feet to make a bed. Doesn't make a lot of sense. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the zoning board? Uh, hearing none, we'll close the pub, public comment section of our meeting this evening. We'll have discussion of the application among the zoning board members. Is there any discussion? Uh, hearing none, I see, would someone be willing to make a motion?
This is Mike Folks. I move, uh, we recommend approval of the accessory dwelling unit, uh, permit for the eleven hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit located at eighty-four hundred Edgerton Road for the reasons outlined by staff report and subject to the stipulations recommended by staff.
Uh, Carol Kreska, second. Uh, is there any further discussion about the motion on the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, the motion passed. So we will approve to the Board of County Commissioners that they, uh, approve this application. And Sean, when will the meeting?
Yes, uh, this application will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at the meeting on November seventeenth at nine thirty AM. And the meeting will be here in this room. Uh, the, it's, this is the, uh, County Administration Building, one eleven South Cherry Street in Olathe. Also, the Board of County Commissioners do have the option for, similar to this, uh, for a hybrid, either virtual attendance or in-person. So, uh, that will be the option at that meeting. Uh, anyone can attend online, but you have to sign if you, if you're going to speak online, the public would have to sign in. I believe it's the Tuesday of the meeting. So please contact, please check the website for updates on that meeting for, uh, virtual attendance. Um, but November seventeenth, nine thirty AM is the date.
Thank you, Sean. This is Kathleen Willnauer. Is there any other business? Uh, would someone like to make a motion for adjournment?
Mark Crumbaker, I make, um, uh, you know, I, a motion that we adjourn.
Folks, second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that concludes our meeting this evening.